I'm calling the Bureau of Media and Commissioner Court. Um, November twenty sixth, we have full form to check for the gap. Um, well, uh, it's a, you know, city of please.
Uh, here in the following, the act, we continue to bless us with wisdom and discernment as under our business as a family of wisdom. We think we feel like the general law will pray for rain all over the county and it may be too. And then they pray in there.
For the final, the next stage to America, the two of the public, which expanding one nation of three dollars individual to remember Professor Strong. I want to expect his plan is how to actually be needed. And I want to say, but they got one individual. We'll write into number four, review and discuss and take necessary action to approve previous meeting of the Commission of Building and Meeting on November twelfth. And the special commission of court meeting on November nineteenth.
I want to do both.
Yes.
I, I'm going to accept, uh, both sets of minutes as presented.
I accept, I'll second. I have a, a move on from Commissioner Holland stating by Commissioner Westman to approve meetings of minutes of moving for November the twelfth and the nineteenth, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion paid. Thank you. Number five, public comment. Nobody want to? Number six, report from City of Alphander, presented discussion only. No show, you can get it started, you're ready. Number seven, recognition announcement. Okay. Okay, we go number eight, Tacey Montori, uh, nine one one G I S coordinator. When you're discussing, then possible action on adding the following. Roadway for the leave of the resort.
The road is been set, you know, quick way.
I know, I'll do what I can. You know me. All right, so I've got a whole lot of roads to you guys this morning. Um, first of which is the Well Creek subdivision and the Lahitus Resort. And I want to first say that this is the first subdivision that's come together where they came to make for road names. Before they built out the plat and brought it to Commissioner's Court. So they haven't come to you guys yet, but they will be. They wanted to make sure though that they were choosing names for their roadways that didn't match other names in the counties. So this is for my purposes, a breakthrough. This is a really big deal. This is a trend that I want to see continue. Anybody dealing with a subdivision, they really do need to make sure they're getting those names unique before they put that map. Because as we know, once they hook that map, I have no choice but to honor it, even if there's ten other roads in the county that are named that. So this is a big deal. But first of which is, well, did we want to do them all at one time? Cause it's pretty self-explanatory in the, in the map there.
Is there subdivision on top of, uh, one seventy or?
Yes, yes, it is. Yes, it is. It'll be northeast or kind of east of Lahitus along one seventy to the south of it.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Yep. And so, yeah, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven roads all together. All are being leased, all are within their properties. So Eastman is not an issue for this and it will grant all of the, the needed access for all of the parcels they intend to sell. Everything checks out of mine.
I'm going to approve the private roadways. Yes, we did, well, Lahitus subdivision, Well Creek subdivision, please retire.
I hear second.
I'll second.
I have, I have a motion in the secret to approve all the roadways, private roadways for the Lahitus subdivision, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, there'll be adding new roadways to B Mountain State on existing plat.
Yep, so this is a cleanup. Um, this is existing, there's already homes there, it's been divided. For some reason, two of the roads never made it to my data. And it is a problem because some addressants were issued that should have had a road name, but they typed something else. So I'm gonna have to do some, some cleanup once we get these added for the residents that are along a couple of these roadways. But yeah, these are already on the plat as these names. So there was no, if they are matching to any others in the county, not much I can do about it because it's already on the plat, so.
So you'll get together with people that?
Yes.
That are on there to change your?
That's right. Yeah. For now, they're good. I mean, they have addresses that work and number one can find them, but to clean that up, we'll need to adjust that address to, to match the road that they actually sit on, so.
I hear motion.
I'm going to approve adding the new private roadways for B Mountain State, as presented.
I hear second. I'll second. In a motion, Commissioner Kalando, second, the Commissioner Westman, to approve new roadways for B Mountain State, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, letter C, new roadways to East Rim Ranch.
All right, this is also another cleanup. Uh, these roads should have been added years ago. Unfortunately, now we have addresses back in these eastern ranch that are tied to the highway. They're three, four miles off of the highway and they're sitting on a road that should have a name, right? Those dirt roads. So I am gonna have to go and work with the, the residents out there and get their addresses updated so that they make sense. Um, from that nine one one and, and standard addressing, uh, uh, rules. But anyway, these are all unique to the county. Eastman looks good. It's all gonna be access for anybody living out there at East Rim Ranch.
I'm going to approve adding the new private roadways to East Rim Ranch, as presented.
I hear second. Second, I have a motion of Commissioner Kalando, second, the Commissioner Westman, to approve new roadways for each private roadways for East Rim Ranch. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, second. Um, letter D, program updates.
I've got just a few things to cover right quick. Um, I know I've been talking about Big Ben Highway and how they have mandated submitting the address and letter along with all the rest of the paperwork. Since we've initiated that, I say we, they initiated that. We have caught probably around forty addresses that would have made it onto a contract incorrectly. And so I would say that is going very, very well. I want to continue to encourage anybody in real estate, do, go ahead. Let's make sure those addresses are right before we continue our, ideally as soon as you pick up a listing. Let's go ahead and make sure that that's correct. We've got a lot of people working on that right now and it's really helping, so. Um, I want to also let you know, I have, in the last couple of months, been also given the data aspect for Culberson and Hudson counties. So if I'm difficult to reach lately, because I now have twenty thousand square miles that I'm looking at. So that'll ease up a little bit in January, whenever I can get a little bit better help up that way. But for now, we're busy, we're very, very busy and we.
Sure good to go.
Well, you know, what can you do? Uh, let's just all be glad they're here though, because they've got some big problems up there that we're trying to solve. And, uh, legal Eastman is a massive conversation up that way. So just want to let y'all know, I am, I'm stretched pretty thin lately, so. Um, as far as the CAD update goes, um, we have been very successful in that. Every time I notice a citizen address is either missing or needs revision, the CAD is immediately going in and updating that record. And so that is very helpful. That may be only one by one, but it's making a difference, okay? Uh, same is true with the elections office. Throughout the election season, I don't know how many addresses we caught. Oh, tons, tons of addresses were caught as a result of registering with the wrong address. Then you end up with me and we get that fixed and now you can register to vote correctly, right? So we're gonna continue to give the elections office all the resources that they need. I don't know if y'all noticed when you went to vote, there were the maps that we've all been working on. So we're getting better and better at, you know, just getting that better information into their hands, so. Um, eagle view, we have a platform that I think I've discussed in court before. We have had the region flown all twenty thousand square miles with a weak imagery. So we have this angled view on the entirety of the region, even out in the middle and nothing. I can see absolutely everything. This will eventually be a platform that we can access via a mobile device. So it can be used by law enforcement, as long as they're service, right? There's, we can't give them absolutely everything, but we do have that ability. That would be akin to like a Google Maps, but only with my addresses and my road names, right? So that's what we're trying to get towards is so that we're all looking at the same map, not all these different maps. But wanted to let you know that's going well, we're just not quite there yet.
Yes.
Yes.
Does the CAD have access to this?
They are the primary reason we started this. They were the initial app.
We talked about that earlier, I don't know where you were on that.
Yes.
Good, they reached my own.
Oh, my gosh, they need a lot of help, you know? Um, this will certainly give them a really good overview of property in general and what's going on. Um, throughout the years, they'll be able to see changes on.
Will they be able to manage that though?
Yes, they will. Yes, they will. They'll have a lot of ability with this. And so now that's if the, the mapping is already there, right? If you have a parcel that isn't mapped out, this isn't necessarily gonna completely help you, right? So there is also that foundational mapping of the parcel boundaries that does need to be addressed as well. But little by little, you know, every little thing is gonna help get that to where it needs to be, so. Really excited to be giving everybody that. And then finally, last update, I promise I'll leave you alone. Um, Big Ben National Park up to this point has had no access to my maps. So the conversation about addressing in the park and what is it in general, they don't know. Because they don't have that same visual that we have, that number one has, that dispatch has, right? We are gonna change that. I have the ability now to give them a platform where they can, within the park, view all of their address and their roads, anything that they need to see. I'm hoping that this will help kind of push that conversation along of look how bad the addressing is, because it certainly is. We have a lot of really out of sequence stuff that does make it difficult, it's confusing, shipping, all kinds of. So that's a really big deal to get actual dispatch now available to Big Ben National Park. We've never been able to do that until now, so just wanted to share that little bit of good news. We're not quite there yet and I needed to talk to James today, but he's not here, so. Um, but we'll get back on that as soon as Thanksgiving's wrapped and, and get that into their hands. Any questions?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sure you've forgotten all this, but can you tell me the difference between road and court and view and street and draw? Is there a statement or are they called like that?
There are definitions for different roads. For instance, boulevard, the definition of a boulevard is gonna be a roadway that's split with a median that has landscaping, right? Okay. I have them all memorized. If you wanted to see those actual definitions, I do have that in the office. Um, we typically are gonna stick to road and street, you know, that's, that's pretty standard stuff that pretty well covers the general, you know, road term. So, but, uh, trail and lane, those are another couple that we can use. I definitely am pushing people away from boulevards and, you know, things like that. It just doesn't make sense out here, so. But yeah, if you want to see the full definition, I can certainly give that to you.
Well, because my, my street is a lane and they said we had, it can be a lane because it's not a through street that, that ends and lanes can't be continued, continue.
Can't continue on?
Yeah, yeah, I, so I was wondering, is that true?
To dig into the definitions to determine if that's true. I haven't gotten that far into it, I'll be honest, you know, those are.
Well, you know.
Not a conversation that's come up.
I understand that court seems to me like not a through street either.
Yeah.
Something with a couple of stack at the end or something like that.
That would make sense to me.
There was anything official. Yes. Okay.
There are some official standards, absolutely, um. Boulevard is really my main one, like, let's just not do that, absolutely not, you know? But circle, yeah, exactly, circle, things like that, so. Anyway, all right, any other question?
City of Martha has a boulevard.
Yes, they do. So does Presidio. So Presidio has more than one. So I don't know, I don't know what to do about that. All right, anything else, Dave?
I'll do it, I'll do it.
Man, thank you, guys. Happy Thanksgiving. If I don't see you in December, yeah, too.
Okay, now go to number nine, discuss and take action regarding new deal contract for fiscal year twenty twenty five.
These are renewed or didn't you?
You know, I don't know. I'll read that one.
My from the Sheriff's Department.
Yeah, this, okay, there's a, in a local cooperation agreement. This agreement is made by, in two, by Blue County, Texas and Etrick County on the date indicated below. I guess it's all about attention services. Medical services, what you're gonna pay.
I re, uh, yeah, I remember having, I think that's incorrect, remember I was doing Hector and Higginz? I don't remember doing Tarrell County before, but that might be my mistake, I do know. It hasn't been terrible. It's all, uh, these are all boilerplate, I assume.
And these are all people that you're gonna use or do, or wanna use or do?
Yeah, we're gonna pay us for sort of any, which can be done.
Are they all paying the same amount? Sixty, oh, no. Higginz was there, there at sixty. Pardon me? Higginz was listed at sixty and so is Tarrell. Okay? I see Hector at sixty eight, yeah. I follow my.
Well, I'm going to approve the three housing contracts, as presented.
I'll second. Okay, I have a, um, a motion to enter into, uh, to take contract for the three, for Hector, papers and Tarrell, as presented. And submitted by Commissioner Mark, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, section. Number ten, discuss and take action to approve award to select engineering architect surveying services. Providing for grant, pre-apply, pre-application application and project implementation for Bridge County. Twenty twenty five Colonial Fund Construction Grant Fund Program funded by Initiative at Texas Department of Agriculture. I have the numbers. Um, and what we scored the other day. And Jacob and Martin, um, they should, they've got the most likes. Do I have a motion to accept him? Or whomever you want? I'm going to accept the proposal to Jacob Martin. Do I hear second?
I'll second.
And then a motion with Commissioner Westman, second with Commissioner Kalando, to accept Jacob and Martin as the, uh, engineering firm, architect surveying firm for the twenty twenty five Colonial Fund Construction Grant Fund Program. Funded by the Texas Department of Agriculture, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And there's a resolute. So the resolution of Bridge County takes it authorizing the award of engineering architectural surveying service provided contract for the twenty twenty five Colonial Fund Construction Grant. Fund Program Project. Whereas co-twenty five Colonial Fund Construction Grant Fund Program Contract Requires Implementation. But professionally experienced in completion of federally funded project. Whereas in order to identify qualified and responsive provider of these purposes, a request for qualification. Process for engineering services have been completed in the quarter with Texas C V V G requirement. Whereas the proposals received by the due date have been reviewed and determined to be, determined the most qualified and responsive providers for the professional service. Now therefore, they've resolved that Jacob and Martin be awarded a contract to provide the Texas C V V G application and budget related professional engineering and architectural. Surveying services for the twenty twenty five Colonial Fund Construction Grant Fund Program. Said to do that any and all contracts are committed with me with the above named services providers are dependent on successful negotiation of the contract with the search for adding. Passed on approved on this day of, uh, November twenty sixth, twenty twenty four.
I'm going to approve the resolution as read.
I hear second. That, that, I'm motion. Motion got passed, uh, made by Commissioner Kalando, passed by Commissioner Westman to approve resolution as read. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
Questions that can be made?
Yeah. All in, all, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you.
You've got another revision in that.
And discuss and approve the resolution authorizing the submission of the Texas Community Grant Development Grant Program. Application to the Texas Department of Agriculture for the Community Development Fund. Resolution, resolution, the commissioners of Bridge County Texas authorizing the submission of the Texas Community Development, uh, Block Grant Program. Application to the Texas Department of Agriculture for the Community Development Fund. Whereas the County Commission of Bridge County desires to develop a viable community, including decent housing and civil, economic environment, expanding economic opportunity. Priskly for persons of low modern income. And whereas it is necessary and in the best interest of Bridge County to apply for funding under the Texas Community Development Block Grant Program. Now therefore, we have resolved by County Commission of Bridge County Texas that Texas Community Development. Block Grant Program Application for the Community Development Fund is hereby authorized to be filed on behalf of the county with the Texas Department of Agriculture. And to be placed in competition for funding under the Community Development Fund. That Bridge County permits to dedicate no less than fifty one percent of the grant funds for activities identified under the state. Planning region as a first priority. Then all funds will be used in accordance with all applicable federal, state, local and programmatic requirements included, but not limited to procurement. Environmental review, labor standards, real property acquisition and civil rights requirement. That Bridge County is committed to provide fifteen thousand matching funds toward the applications, activities for the specific usage. And fund that source to be determined product during the award of grant funding passed and approved the twenty sixth day of November twenty twenty four.
How many check with the grant?
Do I hear second? I'll second. Uh, motion by Commissioner Kalando approved and second by Commissioner Westman to approve resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And thirteen, Road and Bridge Department, Johnny's out, they were gonna move that.
Yeah, right in twelve.
Yeah.
We just did add in eleven and then they write in twelve, which looks exactly the same as I did in eleven.
Oh.
But there is actually a third resolution.
Another one?
Yeah. We must have had, looking at.
Oh, no, I just, I just looked at this, I just.
It's, yes, it was done.
Okay, I missed my head. Bridge County.
Thirty, uh, what is it, case thirty or thirty two?
Okay, the resolution of the Commissioner Court of Bridge County. Of Bridge County Texas authorizing the submission of the Texas Community Development Block Grant Program Application to the Texas Department of Agriculture for the Colonial Fund Construction Program. Whereas Commissioner Court of Bridge County desires to develop a viable community, including decent housing and a civil, living environment, and expanded economic opportunities principally for persons of low modern income. And whereas it is necessary, the best interest of Bridge County to apply for funding under the Texas Community Development Block Grant Program. Now therefore, let it be resolved by the Commissioner Court of Bridge County. That Texas can win the development block grant program application for the Colonial Fund Construction Program is hereby authorized to be filed on behalf. Of the county with the Texas Department of Agriculture to be placed in competition for funding under the Colonial Fund Construction Program. Number two, that Bridge County commits to dedicate no less than twelve percent of the grant funds for activities identified by the state as Colonial Fund. Priority activities including water improvement, wastewater improvement and housing we have. Number three, that all funds will be used in accordance with all applicable federal, state, local and programmatic requirements included, but not limited to procurement, environmental review, labor standards. Real property acquisition and civil rights requirement passed and approved on this twenty sixth day of November twenty twenty four.
I'm going to approve this red, oh, sorry.
Again, motion by Commissioner Kalando, second by Commissioner Mark, to approve resolution of grand, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Okay, now on to the thirteen, Road and Bridge Department. Johnny's out of there, we, our victory, it, um, was going right to get up, the plate, we go down there and.
Do that, right?
And, okay, okay.
Sure, they're pretty tall.
They got it. Give it it. And, uh, they just kind of been, um, second with it, slowly. And I had a lot of people, what they call, I mean, a bunch.
That's only gonna get worse if we don't get any weeks.
Yeah, we're gonna. Um, December second, I'll get, do that, escape, it's my way. So I hope, well, I, we'll get more movement. Who would get so?
We're all gonna move, man. And we're all doing the best we can.
Yes.
Also, you know, like all the roads are starting, it's really suffered from the, the dryness and the traffic.
But it should have. Anyway, anybody else, you know, stuff they done that I can convey that Johnny? Okay. We go to number fourteen, Treasury Office Financial, Financial Report.
You should have my monthly report, uh, for October, twenty twenty four. Um, just print over it right quick. Um, at the end of October, um, uh, October thirty first, twenty twenty four, the total catch and other assets on hand was, uh, sixty million, two hundred seventy three thousand, one hundred six dollars and thirty cents. Um, this, um, monthly report is minus the tax office account and it turns in their, um, um, uh, numbers at this point, so I don't, it's minus their account. Um, investment related, the total interest earned for the month was sixty one thousand, two hundred eighty eight dollars and forty four cents. With an average in interest rate at four point seven seven percent. Um, total, uh, outstanding debt, our general obligation refunding bonds, outstanding principal. Um, at the end of October was nine hundred fifty six thousand, six hundred fifty dollars. Our twenty twenty two cat mulcher. Our twenty twenty-two cat multure uh, principal owed, uh, at the end of October is nineteen thousand, six hundred fifty-two dollars. Our twenty twenty-two nomadic builder uh, principal outstanding is forty-eight thousand, six hundred ninety-one dollars. Um, so month of October is the first month of running this fiscal year, uh, twenty twenty-five, so um, not a whole lot going on the month of October, um, uh, tax, uh, tax money, um, is starting to trickle in more now so than than at the first of the year. Um, so, uh, October doesn't have much to report. Um, general funding took in a hundred and thirty-nine thousand in revenue for October. And then building had built and, uh, payroll, I mean, yeah, building payroll. So not a lot going on, but that's my answer to the report.
I move to approve the treasurer's monthly report as presented.
I hear second. I'll second. And uh, motion of Commissioner Colando, second by Commissioner Westman to approve Treasury Financial Report for October. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. There be?
Nothing, sir.
Okay, thank you. You know, number fifteen, Texas, uh, British County Controller, uh, General Bill.
Good morning. Hi, Detective. The first one was paid in November fifteenth. Uh, showing nine thousand, twenty-one dollars and ninety-one cents which seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-two cents were from general fund and one thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars and seventy-nine cents from other, uh, funds. Uh, next one was paid in, uh, November nineteenth. Uh, showing fifty-seven thousand, four hundred thirty-three and fifty-five cents uh, which twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred eighty-eight and fifty-one cents from general fund and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred forty-five and fourteen cents from other funds. And the ones that need to be paid have proved today. Uh, total, uh, two-hundred, two-hundred thirty-six thousand, eight hundred ninety-four and eighty-one cents which hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred ninety-nine and fifty-seven are from general fund and a hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine hundred ninety-five and fourteen cents from other funds.
Okay. Any questions on the general bill? Do I hear a motion to approve general bill?
I move to approve the bill as presented.
I hear second.
I'll say.
Thank you. Got a motion by Commissioner Colando. Second by Commissioner Mark to approve general bill. As presented, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Uh, anyone budget amendments? No. Line up. Line up, don't poke off. Uh, there be five or two push.
Uh, couple of things to, to, like I know about today, one, uh, just in looking through the deployments that we've had this time, it looks like we have the vast majority of our G four invoices that come in. We do, the, not yet.
Not yet?
We do have, uh, an engine that still, that was still outstanding. I know we've floating around the, we brought here to America, but we've not received, uh, to pay it yet. Hopefully we'll have that for the next finish report. And we want to do a resume, um, for the year of twenty-four to accommodate that building. So just, just that heads up that that's, I understand is it's very substantial amount. So that hopefully will be in next time, um. The other thing that we are working on, it's a big project, it's really supposed to get rolling is the version over to, um, Tyler from Net Data. Uh, I mean, the nine, uh, we are currently standing through our first, what they call data extraction, which means they take our data out of Net Data and plug it into a Tyler, uh, database to probably, you know, where, where the issues, where we need to fix, uh, that sort of thing. I'm currently still waiting to get back from Net Data with the specific, they're supposed to be sending us a letter uh, about the data extraction and I have not received that yet.
Does that give you permission to do it?
It's not for, we are not gonna be able to do it. They have to do it.
Oh, okay.
And, um, we are just, we've got a total of four data extractions. Two of those are supposed to be the free, and then we need to pay for the others to, that that thing should get further off into the spring, the first people cooperate. Uh, they're supposed to be sending a letter to that effect. I was hoping they had it Friday. Didn't have it Friday. Definitely have to kind of get that different today and find out exactly where we are now. That there's, the, we need to complete our exports in Texas and before we do the extractions. And that, and that's a pretty big deal. It's, uh, it's a lot of data. But that'll be that. We'll be working on updating our current accounts. Uh, we're also starting to give in soon. Um, the time period really started probably actually the first day of the year. Uh, where people are gonna be needing to do some training classes to learn how to install our system. And then moving on to the configuration of the system. But that upfront training is important to make sure that the people who they consider all the terms of power users that are helping to design how we're gonna use that system. And that's, but so that, you know, people like, you know, budgets is, is used on the, the accounts payable or Donna, the, 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 the payment module and Jewel and me and, uh, you know, I'd like to have info from you guys. What do you wanna see out of the reporting model? So if there are any customized reports that it does on those, that's my end. But if we get all of that training, that we got probably four weeks worth of owner of all training that we're gonna be doing every half of the year. I'm not gonna, it's really the active configuration.
Do you know how far back the computer data goes?
Uh, the Net Data goes back to twenty sixteen. What they bring over as far as the full detail, uh, is the term year, so that it gave twenty twenty-five, the year of the access conversion and then from four. And then the prior years, the four that gets, I guess, I guess the part of use is to pick from over to the one in the archive or like four.
If we have to access those archives, do we have, can we do it through the new program or will we have to go back to Net Data to get that archival information?
It depends on which piece of it you're talking about. Uh, we will be reviewing Net Data in January uh, with the idea that Net Data will be used to do, to, and check the audits for twenty twenty-three years. And that would be a running renewal contract and we set December the first of next year as, uh, you know, that's it for Net Data. Um, that will, but we're done by then. Um, but it's, but what is maybe entire is more of archival data. Now, if we want to keep that detailed data for those prior years, um, I believe there is an option to have them bring that detail over into Tyler. We might consider that, um, I would say for twenty twenty-three, um, kind of depending on where the audits are when we get to a little bit closer to that, that.
So it basically, it comes down to the audit, whatever permission you need for the audit is what we, we're gonna need to teach that.
Yeah, that's right.
We've already done the audit. We don't need to have that much detail.
Correct. I mean, we still need to have the records and reports, but we don't necessarily need to have access to the end to, to manipulate that data. But you're right, it's depending on the audit span. Um, I know Singleton Park is supposed to be here and I don't know, hey, where's it, where's it, there's not big part, maybe at the next one. Um, Singleton Park, it was out there and did for eleven I work in twenty-two. They are supposed to be back, mind your statements last two weeks of January. And we'll be working hard to tune to audit, leaving them to it. And hopefully they would be able to start getting twenty-three and twenty-four. But the issue is they cannot finish twenty-two and issue that before or even really start doing what they have to do on the slide balance. Slide in until we get this twenty-nine audit adjustments. And the last time check, we still not that close. And that's also gonna impact the Tyler numbers going forward because if you're making adjustments and.
Yeah, it's not finally free and I don't have good numbers for, for twenty twenty-four.
Will you be running two systems in parallel for some time period to, to the sanity checker?
Yes, yes. The, the, the July, they, right now it's just waiting to change the July. And hopefully, excuse me, probably after the third data extraction with, with, I would anticipate that sometime maybe in April or May. Then there would be a period of time where we would, you'll look at the system back in, in parallel. So just to make sure it's important. And I know there's at least one payroll and that, to me, the payroll is the more complicated portion of the system. Uh, as far as what you're talking about, making sure that everything is working correctly. And so I know there's gonna be at least one payroll that will be where I think both systems, make sure everything's exactly met. And I had asked him about possibility of two in parallel. And that's definitely a possibility. So we'll hopefully, yeah, we're gonna have to be a little bit closer.
That's definitely doubles your workload.
Not exactly, but the thing would be extracting data out of Net Data and playing that data into Tyler. So it wouldn't necessarily. Or it, 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 it's gonna add workload. I'm not, I'm not gonna fly it, so.
We're not coming over to the office during that time. We're not coming by the office during that kind of like.
We're not here. No, I mean, it's already getting, getting pretty busy with the just the combination of doing current stuff and also doing like the, the transition. So it's, it's doing what? It's not, not.
Tell you what, you ladies have done awesome.
Thank you.
I just, I think.
I think everybody is.
I think.
Everybody is working really hard, so.
Louis, enjoy your turkey and don't, and don't look at numbers.
Well.
Unless you're down. For kind of.
I'll stop me.
Okay. Any other thing for me?
Uh, not a big question.
Okay. Uh, Jose, you wanna give a small, we're loaded on your stuff, so.
I have no problem. I have no price to give as well. I'm not. We're, uh, we're here.
That's okay. If you want, if you wanna give a little update or whatever, what's going on, it would be fine.
No, the only note that we have is, uh, Carroll family joining us as a contact. So we are holding two for them right now. And we have the marks of contact doing, just trying to get as many contacts as we can, as we can. We're talking to lots of county involverses, so the young ones will start by some hundred that suit too.
So the numbers just go down, um, on what we're housing.
Right now, we're, we're at forty-one. And most of them are in contract. So we managed, Payless County is helping us out a lot because their general is, uh, under repairs. So we're housing a lot of people. And even medically, we are not taking the burden on them. We're sitting in directly to the county to be responsible. That's what I'm seeing. We do have the manpower and the time that they're taking to the hospital, but likely that then they, though it comes into accidents. That's, that's all I have. They also got that person. Me and I, then I do apologize.
We just kind of want for that. We did, you know.
And I saw Kelly's mid car and I'm like, let me run over there. So, but thank you and I hope you're having a happy Thanksgiving.
Now, unless you have the answer, we came with the numbers for the daily rate for the counties, you know, that in and you know why? The, the numbers for Ector County were sixty-eight and the other two were sixty.
Well, right, right now, um, this is Ector County's bigger county. So we're, these are smaller counties, so we're pretty helpful. We gave them a little bit better because there is a, there is a market right now for contracts. So we kind of started asking them out, but they're charging overall.
Okay.
And, uh, being smaller counties really have, they were not even charging for the bigger counties that they paid for.
It makes sense.
No, I just didn't make sense.
Okay.
Yes, are we, we're in part two there, uh, just because sometimes it, it's good to have those contracts, whenever they need repairs in their facility, they can house. Hey, some commission at Joe Center, so if we have that, then you bring it over. Sometimes it isn't the courtesy all between sheriff and sheriff, so we just wanted to put some contracts in there. We look like in the Joe and Sufi's.
So who is, who is doing that now?
No, right now, right now, we're good. But we're, we're just, we're still keeping our margins.
Okay. You take.
Got it.
Got it.
Thank you.
All right, take your time. You have a good holiday. Uh, numbers. Let me put my guess. Sixty tourism. All right. There we go. Number seventeen, no float meetings today. Uh, eighteen scheduled next ready permission court meeting on December tenth. Twenty. I'm sorry? Okay. All right, I'm sorry. I guess we have a contract for Power Play Marketing National Park and for Power Play Marketing for Texas Southwest Edition. Oh.
He put the number four.
Yeah. Let me see what the price is. One of sixty-five hundred dollars for Power Play Marketing with, uh, National Parks and and the other one. This, they're both the same. Yeah. Do I hear a motion to maintain the, the Payless contract?
And if you're paying for two contracts, it's.
Well, I'll say.
I get a motion with Commissioner Colando and second by Commissioner Mark to approve these contracts as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay? And yes, again, um, next meeting is December tenth. Remember, I think we have a motion.
I move to adjourn.
My second. I got a motion with Commissioner Colando, second by Commissioner Westman to adjourn the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.